You have always been there for us, even in the darkness from the very beginning. And then you said, let there be light, and there was light, and it was good. And you sent your son the true light that shines in the darkness, and the darkness cannot overcome it. Please, God, in your graciousness, shower us with your light, your joy, your love, so that tonight and always we proceed in wisdom in your will. We ask all of these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August first regular meeting of the City Council, City of Nacogdoches. If you will, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we'll open the meeting with open forum. We have one, uh, open forum. Mr. Grimmit? If you'll come in, yeah, state your name and, and, uh, address, please.
Hi, my name is Ryan Grimmit. My address is thirty-nine sixty-six County Road two fifty-six. I am here today to bring to your attention a double standard that exists in this town as it relates to automotive detailing. More importantly, the water collection that results in auto, that as a result of automotive detailing. In eighty-seven, uh, we opened our business on University Drive, and within a few months, we received a cease and desist letter from the City of Nacogdoches because we did not have a water collection system in place to collect our wastewater. Um, fast forward to today, uh, two locations later, which have both had water collection systems. Um, and then any other brick and mortar location that exists in this town has a water collection system. Uh, but if you are a mobile detail outfit, there is no requirement for water collection. All of their wastewater runs right into the storm sewer. This, in my opinion, is akin to when the restaurateurs brought something to you guys about ten years ago when they had an issue with the people that were doing mobile food trucks. Mobile food trucks weren't having to abide by the same guidelines that a restaurant was. They didn't have a fire suppression system. They didn't have ventilation. There was an ordinance passed that corrected that. I'm asking for an ordinance to be passed to make mobile detailers, and there are multiple mobile detailers in this town, collect their wastewater. There is a provision in place. It can be done. There are mobile detail mats that will allow them to catch their wastewater, and then they should have to dispose of it, just like anybody else that operates a brick and mortar location. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grimmit. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, if I could remove items D and E from the consent agenda, please.
D?
D and E.
Okay, D and E. Okay, anything else?
I move approval of the balance of the consent agenda except items D and E.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Okay. I want to hear from Mr. Bartlett first.
Mayor Council, Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. So if it's okay with you, I'll kind of address this as one item. We just obviously have a budget amendment and then an action item, but, uh, so the bar screen at the sewer treatment plant, a highly exciting piece of equipment, but a very important piece of equipment that everything runs through and it catches solids, and we won't detail more than that for you, but it catches solids at the front works of the plant that can't be taken care of in plant processes. And so it's very important. And those are screened off and then hauled to the landfill. So it's, uh, as, as everything is in a sewer plant, there's duplicity. So in this case, there's two bar screens so we can work on one and the other can function. Well, both of them have broken. And so they're about, we were trying to remember eight, eight or nine years old, we think, when they were originally installed, so. We have programmed already to look at replacing these in the future. We were underway with a contract with an engineer to develop new plans. We were actually going to look at maybe a different model. Uh, this one had worn out a little quicker than we thought. Uh, and in that work, both sides went down. So what we have decided to do, this has become urgent. So right now, we're spending about eight thousand dollars a month on a rental pump to bypass pump around this twenty-four hours a day, plus the diesel. We're working overtime with staff because we're literally raking those solids out by hand. Um, again, no visuals, but it's very important that we keep that up. If we have a large rain, this will not be a very good thing. We'll probably overflow. These pumps can't keep up, so. We're trying to move forward, and what we have before you tonight, excuse me, is a budget amendment. I'm trying to look for my amount, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar budget amendment, and this is to buy the equipment to fix this one. If we decided to move forward and purchase new ones and go through the design process, we would be a year, year and a half out by the time we got through that process and waited for equipment. That's how long the turn time is. We can fix these, but it'll take four to six months just to get the repair pieces in, and it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand to basically rebuild the guts of them. So tonight, you have a budget amendment to do that. There are available funds, uh, in reserves to cover that. And then secondly, you have a second item beyond that to implement those funds. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
That, that was really the reason I pulled it. You know, Mr. Bartlett, as, as well as most people that I, if there's an item of this dollar amount, I just want to hear a background of it to make sure that we're spending our money wisely.
Sure.
Um, so we don't have any bar screens in place right now. We're having to manually do it. And our best case is to approve this, and still it will take us six months to get back on.
That's correct. I'm, I'm hopeful for five, but I'm telling you six, yes. So the screens are in place. They're just not moving and raking and, and moving water out, so. We're able to capture this stuff, but it's all manual at this point. Yes, sir.
You said that this, uh, repair is not replacing. It's just repair.
That's correct.
How long does this repair last?
So we are basically going to rebuild everything in it. So to have all, that's why the, the number is so big. So I anticipate we'll get the same kind of life out of it, Councilman Bolden, I'm hoping eight years.
So you wouldn't have to purchase?
Well, so we won't. If we purchased a new one, the time was just what the killer was.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's the only reason I didn't move forward with actually seeking another model, brand, and purchasing another one is I don't, we couldn't afford a year and a half of bypass pumping and, and staff issues, so. Um, maybe not quite my first choice, but in this case, I think our only choice to keep the plant functional. This is a critical component. And this is our fastest solution.
So you've got somebody working twenty-four some?
Well, they, yeah, I mean, there are people, we, we operate our plants generally around the clock, even with a minimal staff sometimes, but we do, we're out checking it and raking it. Even folks like Bart are working Saturdays and Sundays trying to shift off. We're short-staffed anyway, so. But yes, sir, we're, we're working additional hours, and somebody's got to keep the diesel in the pump, and so it's definitely, it's become a burden.
Well, page thirteen in this capital, the, the budget, it says six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for bar screen replacement. Will that be gone now?
That, that will be gone.
So you're saving two hundred thousand dollars?
So we, and we, yes, sir. And so the initial, initial early estimates, uh, with some engineering fees added to it, we were kind of in that range. Now, we've gotten some, some estimates here, but I want to qualify this. This is the materials cost to replace it. And so we will be bidding the actual installation cost. Now, um, that originally, when we priced it here just a few days ago, was about fifty thousand. So we will be saving money. We should be under five hundred thousand net out, but we do have to bid the replacement, so. We're treating this, because this is a sole source, so I, the procurement of it is just go order it. But the, we're going to actually bid out the, the installation of it. Obviously, I got some time to do that bidding because the material won't be in, so. Yes, sir, but I'm hoping that we'll drive out, uh, including some engineering for about a half a million.
Yeah, what's the timeframe for replacement?
So I think it's going to take four to six months just to get it in, and probably the better part of forty-five days, thirty to forty-five days to, to rebuild it. And I'm making a, a guess at that.
How long would it be to order a new one?
So if we ordered a new one, about a year and a half. Depending on the brand, but something in that nature, yes.
You don't have much of a choice, do you?
I do not have much of a choice.
So are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I move that we approve items D and E. Um, is that good enough?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve items D and E on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to the, uh, regular agenda. Uh, receive presentation on the two thousand twenty-three Texas Blueberry Festival. Mr. Wayne Mitchell, Chamber of Commerce, Grace Handler, and...
I'm not Grace Handler, and I'm not Wayne Mitchell. I'm Scott Lawler.
Okay, Scott. Sorry. What's the paper said?
We're going to give you a, a brief, just a very brief summary on the bluegrass concert. Angela?
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, well, uh, Scott and I have had the honor and privilege of bringing the Blueberry Bluegrass Concert in the park as part of the Texas Blueberry Festival for, uh, festival weekend for eight years. We think we've added to the bluest weekend in Nacogdoches, and we know bluegrass has mass appeal, and we've worked very hard to make the most of our concert to visitors near and far. Scott does a fantastic job, uh, picking out our bands. Um, they draw crowds from all over Texas, Louisiana, Arkansas, Kansas, and Missouri. Um, and, you know, there's lots of facets to this concert, the bands, selection of those, the concert goers, of course, all of those that attend our concert. They, they buy food, they buy gas, they buy merchandise. They spend the day and hopefully spend the night, many of them spent the night this year, to attend the Blueberry Festival the next day. And we work very hard to get those folks here, and they, they, you can look at the photos from this crowd. Um, they just kept coming. Um, and our concert's very different than other concerts. We have a lot of young people at our concert because first and foremost, it's free and it's family-friendly. And, um, no alcohol is served, and it's just a great, wonderful, fabulous event. We had forty-nine percent, as per Scott's, uh, survey, forty-nine percent of the folks came from outside Nacogdoches County, and twenty-six percent stayed overnight. Um, we purchased advertising of both Google and Facebook, and between our search and display results, our impressions reached two hundred and fifteen thousand folks with a total of twenty-five hundred clicks. Um, our most popular ad was a family-friendly, free concert music. Um, on Facebook, we tallied forty-five thousand impressions with about thirty-eight hundred clicks. So we've got, our posts were delivered to nearly sixty-five thousand folks, and we reach folks, this concert's so different, we reach folks of all ages, but our predominant followers are, forty-nine percent of our followers are between the ages of forty-five and sixty-four. Um, we want to thank, um, our, the person that allows us to continue to have this concert free is Rex Perry Autoplex. I invited him to come, um, and, and allowed it to be free and family-friendly. We want to thank our other sponsors, Cataract Glaucoma, Retina Consultants, Harry's Building Supply, CBTX, Motor Homes of Texas, and XCTX. And we couldn't do it without the support of the City of Nacogdoches. Um, you guys do so much for us, from our event insurance to the police, to the firefighters, all those folks that are in there. And, and I can't, can't really say enough about the Parks Department. I mean, they make Festival Park. It's absolutely fabulous. It's beautiful every year. It's well-done, and it's a shining star for Nacogdoches. As you saw from those photos, the folks, the park looked beautiful. I don't know.
We love the electricity.
Yes. We love the electricity. Can we just say we love the electricity, and all the vendors love the, and the restroom. A real live restroom with these folks that haven't had a chance to get down there. Very excited about that. Yes, we're very, very excited. Um, and, um, thanks to the SFA Alumni Association and, and the bus drivers. We have the best transportation group around. Um, we want to thank our organizing committee, the Bee Gees, Scarlett Long with Parkway Wealth Management, Scott Water with XCTX, um, Morgan Nash with Rex Perry Autoplex, Amber Daniel, she's a stay-at-home mom, Cindy Miller with Charles Poole Real Estate, and Tammy Wheeler with SFA. We just really want to say, express our sincere thanks to the city and the city staff and the city team and the Parks and Recreation Department and everybody that makes that day possible, the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce, um, Wayne Mitchell, Kelly, Sherry, Sharon, and Grace Handler with the Blueberry Festival. Their incredible support for us financially and every other way, and the concert has grown, and it's, it's a true blessing to be a part of it, and, um, we're excited because we're making a new move, and, um, we're actually going to have the concert, the twenty-twenty-four concert will actually be on Saturday, May fourth. Um, we're going to, you know, have the two events standalone. Uh, we think it's a whole new weekend in Nacogdoches, right between, uh, the, uh, Doudat BBQ and the, uh, multicultural festival, and then the next weekend is SFA graduation. So it'll be a whole new weekend. We hope we'll get lots of new folks in town, and I know the chamber will probably give you an inkling of all the fabulous things they're going to plan for twenty-twenty-four on Friday night. So thank you again very much for the opportunity to work on this concert and to, um, be a part of wonderful Nacogdoches.
So the Blueberry Festival is moving from June to May?
No, no, no. The Blueberry Festival will remain on their normal weekend.
Just the concert, just the bluegrass concert.
Okay.
Trying to escape some of the summer heat.
Be wonderful.
So then I'll...
Yes.
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Kelly, um, Kelly Augustine and Grace Handler to talk about the Blueberry Festival.
We do want to thank you, Angela and Scott. I know, I mean, you've thanked everybody else, but we all, I know, want to thank you both for all the work you did to make it such a wonderful event, and we know you get paid a whole lot to do that.
About what you do. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you both and everyone that was a part of the, the concert. It was a fantastic event, and my son loved it. He ran and got all, all sorts of dirty.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. How are you guys doing tonight?
God, thank you.
Good. Well... I do. I can talk loud, especially when I'm talking to grandchildren. Festivals like this do not happen just because. They are successful in a large part to our full team of volunteers, sponsors, support from our business owners, CVB, City of Nacogdoches, and all departments, KMB and our community. I would like to say thank you to our wonderful and amazing city staff. You know, all of you, any and all departments, because without you guys, we couldn't move forward. We couldn't keep going. In the city, oh my goodness, all their help. You'll find out more about that in just a few moments. Um, these are a great group of people that we get to work with, that we have the pleasure to work with. This year, I'm proud of our downtown business owners for setting up and keeping their space open in front of their business. Either they had stuff out to, for people to purchase, or they just left it open. And out of my nine years of being the Texas Blueberry Festival Chair, this was the largest commitment from our downtown business owners that I have seen. Now, let's see. How many of those puppy? I am not very good with these. So because of you guys' support, the Nacogdoches hotels, restaurants, and local businesses were filled. Thousands of residents enjoyed a wonderful day at the Texas Blueberry Festival. And Nacogdoches was treated to music and entertainment. We celebrated our diverse cultures. We attracted visitors to our area from all over, and guess what? We promoted the Texas Blueberry Festival industry to America. And we were able to provide a safe and exciting family event. Now, what was new? Does any of you know what was new this year? Well, that's a guess. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we had the, uh, presenting sponsor, Tipton Ford, offered the Ford Bronco, Bronco Raptor simulator. Now, I say that very funny and slow because, Wayne, this may have been before your time, but Scott, I think you were in that meeting. They brought in another thing, so I'm telling on myself just to give y'all something funny to laugh about. I called it a rapture. I didn't do it once. I did it twice, and I didn't even catch my mistake. I'm just going right on and just blah, 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 blah. So anyways, um, the new cool zones provided by KAVX, KSWP, Christian Radio, Ferraris Heating and Air. And you know what? We had the city that had one too, but I also see, or, or, I'm sorry, cert that had one. I also see that we forgot one. We had a great cool zone at the very end of our festival. It was left off the slide. It was God's gift of rain that day, so it was a quick shutdown and a great, great cool-off for us. Uh, we had the Blueberry Red Bull meltdown by Soda and Sweet Shop. We had People's Choice Award was added to the Fun Case Car Show. And then we had Touch the Tractor. Now, does anybody know what else happened down in Festival Park? It was called One Way Diesel Performance, and that was an add to our event this year, which hopefully we'll be adding more. Unique Experiences was on our live stage, and I'll let you guys read. Is it split there? Am I not just?
It's all right.
It's, y'all can see it. Okay. Um, as you can read there, I don't want to just go through that. But I do want to hit out some things. On the Ford F-150 by, um, Tipton Ford, that is our festival truck. If you've not had an opportunity to have a picture with it next year, stop by, snap a picture. And Rain, or Mayor Johnson, I want to tell you thank you because I saw you walking down and around the morning of festival.
I would too.
And I was, you know, I saw you, and I'm going, oh my gosh, right in the middle, he's crazy. Because I said, woo, because that's when people are coming in and checking in, and he did a very good job of just walking around and checking it out. So now I'm going to turn it over to Kelly for a few seconds.
Well, good evening. Has it moved forward? No. Uh, my name is Kelly Augustine. I work at your Chamber of Commerce, the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, we included this slide because we believe it's important that you know that along with working with the sponsors and the volunteers and our community partners, the chamber works with our area businesses so that they have the opportunity to make the most of the blueberry season. In fact, at the last board retreat we held in summer of twenty-two, our directors were asked to rate every chamber program. And the Texas Blueberry Festival was the only program that received the highest scores by every director, a perfect score. And that speaks to the fact that the festival is a major economic driver in our community. We understand that whether a business works directly with a festival or not, the event causes a favorable impact, opens the doors of opportunity, and floods our town with folks looking for the perfect kickoff to their summer. As you see, we highlighted Susu's Popcorn and Candy Cafe. It was a brand-new business just established on Main Street and a chamber member. Susu quickly saw the value of blueberry and created a new blueberry cheesecake popcorn. So for stats, excuse me, thanks to Dell Polocretis with Texas Forest Trail, we have some new technology to apply that gives numbers. Let's start with this. On Saturday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the number of unique visitors recorded was fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-six. The visitor is really a cell phone, so this does not include people without mobile devices. And the word "unique" describes a cell phone that has entered Nacogdoches during a specific time period. That number does not include the cell phones already located within Nacogdoches, or you can think of it as the cell phones that call Nacogdoches home. Therefore, in addition to the cell phones that were living in Nacogdoches during that time, fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six were added too. And we believe the Texas Blueberry Festival had something to do with that. We can also tell that the majority of these mobile devices traveled from the markets that are specifically targeted by visit Nacogdoches. So it's proven that they know their audience, and it's good to know that the event attracts pretty much the same number of twenty-five to forty-four-year-olds as the next age range, forty-five to sixty-four-year-olds, and as the sixty-five-plus group. So we can confidently say that we attract multiple generations. Side note, we have Sherry Morgan noted on this slide because of her work with the chamber each year, including this year's event. And interim executive director Ashley Morgan was there right alongside us from the beginning, and Shelby Leroy, and of course, Mike Bay was in the mix. Hey, don't we agree that Mike Bay should be a future attraction? Maybe he already is. Moving on to media attention, the chamber reserves a good amount of its marketing budget to promote the festival and buying from our local media because we support and do business with our members. Along with the audience reached through print and broadcast advertising, the Daily Sentinel proposed new electronic options that expanded our reach to our local and surrounding markets. The chamber again saw social media platforms reaching anywhere from two to four thousand a day and promoting fun online conversations where people begin tagging their friends with posts like, "We'll be back again this year and can't wait." It really is fun to watch the conversations as they happen, and you are welcome to scroll through the Texas Blueberry Festival Facebook page, Instagram, and Twitter posts to read them for yourselves. Beyond paid advertising, our local media outlets really love to show love for the festival. Around the Town offered the front page of June's edition for a festival story, and local DJs and broadcast personalities started the Blueberry Chatter months in advance, free of charge. We really see a community coming together in June, but a lot of that work happens well before that weekend, and the chamber tries to do all possible to thank those involved. Thank you, council members, for your time and your service, and that concludes my report. And there's more from Grace.
Do we have time?
Sure. We've got all night, Grace.
Keep rolling. Okay. We can't do this without partners, and I've said it to you guys, and I've said it to the city, all the, all the city workers, everyone that was involved. Partners are listed on this, uh, slide, so you guys can read it without me going through it. When we say we can't not do it without them, and I tell you that this is a true statement, it's because you guys, our city, our chamber, our volunteers, everyone in the community that comes out and takes a big part of it is a community event. Tipton Ford, he has always been so wonderful to work with at the Texas Blueberry Festival, and I'm grateful for his dedication as a person, not only for what he does for the Texas Blueberry Festival, but also what he does for Nacogdoches. His dedication and support is beyond anything that I have seen, especially for the Texas Blueberry Festival. In fact, I'm going to tell you because it was on TV, he told us that we weren't charging him enough sponsorship, so. Yeah, may change, who knows? Um, John Barry, when we were closing down, and we're standing there, and I can tell you, we were standing there talking, and we both saw that gust of wind, and I'm going, oop. Maybe we're going to just go ahead and start closing, let the vendors start putting things away at three-thirty into their vehicles and get ready to exit at four? Well, it happened a lot quicker because right behind that came the rain. And he and the rest of the officers, the city crews, the volunteers, did an excellent job, an excellent job of cleaning our streets, getting them off, getting them into their vehicles and out in a very timely, safe fashion. KMB, my goodness, they were like me. We were both crazy because I realized, as I'm sitting there holding the stop sign, ripping, you know, the, the, uh, zip ties off the pole, that I'm holding a metal sign, and, and it was storming pretty bad. And I thought, man, that was stupid. Um, so they did the same thing. CVB, all the work before, during, and after the festival, you know. Ashley, you jumped in, and you and Shelby jumped in at the end, and y'all kicked butt, so thank you. Okay. Now, we cannot do it also without our sponsors, just like we can't do it without partners. We can't do it without sponsors. I know that I've talked a lot about Tipton and how good he is because he is. Uh, he is a diamond because he's our Blue Diamond sponsor. He is also a diamond. He loves, and he loves... He is also a diamond. He loves and he lov- his love and dedication not only shows for the Texas Blueberry Festival, but again throughout. So thank you Neil, and I know he's not here. He couldn't show. Uh, Blue Toe Pass, it is awesome that we have a lot of sponsors that come in and help with this event because without them, we couldn't do it. And I'm going to hit a few. I've hit Tipton Ford, our Blue Sapphire is Optimum. And Blue Toe Pass sponsor is Batters Law, Pilgrim's Pride, Nacogdoches RV Outfitters of Texas. And I know I skipped that one, right? Cause I'm going to come back to it. It's awesome when you have a first-time sponsor come in and you ask them the question, is there anything particular that you would like to spend your money on and, and directly sponsor? Well, they come in and they said, sure, we want to do the Pick-a-Pick, which is picking of the blueberries. So Eaton Cooper Power System was one that came in and did a great job. Volunteers, this year except for myself. Not good at this. It's not going again. Um. Okay. This year except for myself, myself, Ralph and Kathy, we had a no, a hu- whole new crew marking the streets on Friday night. Now, I don't know if you guys have ever seen us out there marking streets, but that kind of gets a little fun. We're out there with chalk, measure a, a, a little walkie stick to measure them. Well, this year Laura and I walked the streets of Nacogdoches and we measured each business with a tape measure. We also measured where the door front was in front of their business to try to get it as close as possible. Every year there's going to be somebody that you just can't get it right there. But we're working to do that and dedicate more time to making sure our downtown businesses have what they need to make sure that they can have a good day at the festival as well. To our volunteer crew that arrives at four AM and stays to the end of the festival, which we do have, I'm one of them. The ones that come throughout the day and stay into closing, these guys have done an outstanding job. Mary Mochniak and all she does with her block captains to help our vendors get in and out of the festival area, they do an amazing job. And I've already said something about Laura Culpepper, but she does our maps. She provides you guys with the maps, the city with their maps. So she is awesome. She doesn't only do that, she offers her building. And she says, hey, come in, this is a cool zone for the volunteers. We can go in there, sit down for a little bit, eat, have some water, or just say, phew, it's really hot. Uh, University Rental for allowing us to park the golf carts there and house them. The Chamber Board for believing in the festival, Chamber Staff for their countless hours of work they put in, both months, weeks leading up to the and following at, after the festival. And the incredible group of volunteers that we have is a reason I truly love Nacogdoches. So we are gearing up already for our thirty-fourth Texas Blueberry Festival presented by Tipton Ford again. Woo, woo. We hope to see you on June eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Do you have questions?
No, we'll open it up to, is there any questions from the public or comment from the public? There being none, anybody in the council have anything?
Once again, we all thank you all. So I'll let other people speak this time.
Yeah, y'all do a great job, Grace. It's, uh, I, I go early in the, I get up early in the morning, so I'm always there whenever they're coming in. And I walk down the middle of the street and I've done that for years. And, uh, your organization is, is really, really good. And, uh, it's a big time for Nacogdoches and brings lots of money into this town and people. But some of them may stay, you know, which is what we want.
That's what we hope for, isn't it?
Do a good job.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I have one more request if y'all don't have anything else. Would y'all like to come down and take a picture so we could present you with your poster?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to the, uh, our regular agenda item B. This kind of ties in with the consent agenda, uh, C, which we approved and considered an ordinance amending chapter fifty of the Historic Preservation, Article Two Landmarks and Historic Districts, Division One Historic Landmark Pres- Preservation Committee, providing for several, several ability clause and providing an effective date. Now we go down to the regular agenda. We consider appointing additional members to the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee. And we had already added to this committee, but we had to redo the ordinance. And we have this done. So we are adding Z Whitehead and Vicky Winthrop to the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Okay. Pardon me?
Z.
That's, that's, that's on the fifteenth.
Okay, uh, next item, that's okay. Next item, C. Discussion regarding proposed, uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget. Ms. Pam?
Mayor, Council, Pam Carbo, Director Finance. Um, tonight normally would have been the night that y'all would have seen the tax rate calculation as well as the first draft of the budget. Um, you have a copy of the draft of the budget. Um, do not have the tax rate calculations. Um, uh, the appraisal district informed me, um, that they were not going to probably be able to get it to me in time for me to get it compiled for tonight, um, due to some other, um, uh, deadlines that they had with the state. He did, um, send me a calculation yesterday. Um, it was not ready. And so he, we've been working through it. He has some changes to some of the tax ceiling issues that, that we implemented last year. Um, Jason and I will be discussing probably Thursday or Friday, um, the full calculation, um, just so that we both are on the same page and we agree, um, that, that what he has calculated is accurate. So tonight you'll just be kind of talking about what we're going to talk about next week, which I know, um, Councilmember Bellinger will be happy because you're going to have a whole week to look at this budget before we actually talk about it next week. So, um, so that, that brings us to the special meeting next week. We are going to have an item to, to look at the draft budget and the calculated tax rates. And so that will be presented next, uh, next Tuesday. Um, August the fifteenth will be the night that we ask you to vote on a proposed tax rate. This is not the vote for the tax rate. This is basically your maximum tax rate. This is a, a step that the state legislature added several years ago. Um, so basically before we ever get to the point where the budget or the tax rate is adopted, you basically say, we're not going to go over this rate. We may go down, but we cannot go over. And so, um, normally what we'll present there is going to be the voter approval rate. And y'all will say this is, it can go no higher than that. Um, so once those rates are calculated, we will, we will actually take that vote on the fifteenth, saying that that's the max the tax rate could be. Um, I, I've added a couple of dates on there if we want to have an additional, uh, workshops. Of course, those are Tuesday nights. We can have them any other nights that, that y'all choose. Um, if y'all are interested in adding a couple of workshops between the time that y'all see the draft on the eighth and we actually adopt it on September the fifth, um, you know, that, that's, that's at y'all's discretion. And we can have multiple ones. And I've got two dates on there, but if we need more than two, that, that's perfectly fine. Just need some direction from y'all as to how many of those, those workshops y'all would like to have. Um, and then again, September the fifth will be the budget public hearing and the adoption. And September the twelfth will be the tax rate public hearing and the ratification. Um, just as, as a reminder, um, this year's priorities and challenges are very similar to last year. Um, you know, recruiting employees, um, has been and, and, and it continues to be, um, an issue for us. We have, um, a lot of vacancies. If you've looked at our job opportunity listing, um, in the last few weeks, you'll notice that we do have quite a few, quite a few vacancies. And so that has always been a challenge. It continues to be a challenge. Um, maintaining competitive pay and, and, and addressing cost of living adjustments for our employees, um, is, continues this year to be a, a, a challenge as well. Um, of course, we're still, still experiencing very, very high cost, um, for all of our supplies. Um, and so that just kind of trickles down into everything else. And of course, the, the CNAC committee has, has proposed to y'all, um, the, the bond items with the capital improvement plans. And so that's, those are all things that we have tried to build into this budget, um, when we can. Um, and so we're going to talk a little bit about what's in the budget and what is not. Um, so let's talk a little bit about personnel. Why did that one change and that one didn't?
Pam, will we come, will we come back to the dates?
We should, we can, we can do it now or then, however you want to do it.
So, um, I was looking at the dates and eighth, on August fifteenth, aren't we supposed to do something with the bond also? Is that right?
Um, I believe so. Yes, yes.
And what will we, and, and do we?
That's the resolution? I think that's the resolution to call the election that night with it.
Eighth, will we be getting more information about how that bond's structured? And I mean, we really, sorry, I'm, I'm just looking at the dates.
No, yeah.
So we have a working draft right now with our bond counsel. Uh, it's simply a pretty simple ordinance with the propositions in there. We still don't have, um, the tax impacts yet, so that kind of blanks are waiting to be filled in. But we will have this to you way early of that August fifteenth meeting so that you can have and read that.
Can, can we have it by, before August eighth in case we have some? I know there were some items on there that aren't thirty years.
Sure.
And there were some questions about a lot of, of the different items.
Sure. We, we've asked bond counsel to try to have everything wrapped, like say, even if we're still kind of figuring the final, uh, tax pennies i- impact, uh, before the eighth. So we've asked that. So we can certainly give that to you.
So, so we could have it before the eighth and then put that on the agenda just to discuss. Uh, we don't have to ratify it or put it, do whatever it needs to be done.
You could, absolutely, yeah.
But I'm, I'm hoping we will get that clarified in case there's some questions or in case there's something we need to talk with bond counsel about.
Sure. I can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Pam, I, I tell you, I, I, I'm a little concerned about this appraisal district. I know they've had that problem with their system for a while. Is there any relief in sight?
So, um, I, I think that the, the software conversion is, is pretty much handled now. Um, he was able to provide us with certified value estimates by the twenty-fifth. He, he was actually able to do that. Um, the tax rate calculation by wall doesn't have to be presented until August the seventh is the deadline. And so he has other deadlines that were August the first, so he had to work on those first. And so I, I tried to explain that I have to have them before I can do my budget. And so there was a timing issue there. Um, but, um, like I said, he's probably ninety-five percent there on the tax rate calculations currently. Um, at this point, I think the, the software issues are solved. So he has the ability to run the reports to give me the numbers to actually calculate the tax rate. But that all was very late last week when that all kind of came together. So it was just a perfect storm of, of problems this year at the appraisal district. So did you want to talk about anything else on the dates before we jump? Okay.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
You're good. Um, okay, so it's still not changing there. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, don't. This, this one's not changing, so is this one out? Does that say personnel? No, it's still not saying.
Michael. I told you so.
Well, I don't, I don't know. No, this is, this is changing. This one, it's just not changing everything else. The laptop's working, it's just not connected. Maybe it lost connection. You can, something's happening. Um, so the next, next slide one, when it comes up, is going to show you the, the personnel cost for the current year as well as the personnel costs that are included in the draft budget. Um, here we go. Ta-da. Um, the percentage is over there. That is the percentage that the personnel represents of each of those funds. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, twenty-two point eight million dollars in salary, total benefits, all in personnel cost for the general fund, represent seventy-two percent of the general fund's operating expenditures. For utility, it's twenty percent, sanitation twenty-nine, and airport twenty-three percent. So you can see that those, those increases this year significantly in the general fund. If you'll remember, last year, we adopted the step plan for fire and police. We also adopted assignment pay for fire and police. We also adopted, um, the sign-on bonuses for police. And we did the CDL licensing for, um, like public works, streets, parks, those departments, um, as well as the creation of the Public Information Officer position mid-year. We also have included in the twenty-three, twenty-four, the re-instituting of the three police officers that were frozen last year. So that is, that is the significance of the increase in the general fund for last year and this year. So that brings us to what was requested as far as positions this year and what was actually included. The draft budget in front of you includes two hundred and thirty-four thousand to re, or unfreeze the three police, fro- frozen police officers. That is included in the budget. The other items that are in red are not included in the budget. These were positions that were requested this year, but we are not able to, um, to budget those assuming we're going to stay with the no new, no, no, no revenue rate. Without tax rates to, to use, all I could use for revenue was what we had collected for the current year. So the, this draft budget in front of you is based on same property tax collections from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. So anything additional that we want to do, we'll, we'll take an increase in the actual property tax revenue. So there is the Assistant City Manager position that was requested. Now this is all in costs. This is the, this is not just salary. This is all benefits as well. Um, a custodian in building maintenance and a laborer in parks and landfill. And like I said, none of the ones in red are included in the draft budget for you. So another thing that's not included in the budget before you is any type of COLA for, um, for employees. Now, the step plan for fire and police is included. That's a one percent jump, um, each year for, um, police. Fires, their, their steps are done every five years and so they, they aggregate. And at the end of the five years, they do a, a five percent increase, but police is one percent per year. Those are built into the budget, but as far as any type of COLA, that is not built into the budget. This is the cost if we were to do a one percent COLA for each fund. And like I said, this is not included. So if you wanted to do a three percent COLA, it would be a little less than six hundred thousand dollars for the general fund. Keep in mind, at current values at the appraisal district, for what we think our property tax is going to be, that, that is about a one cent on the sales, only on the property tax to fund a general fund, one percent COLA. Um, when we have tax rates next week, we'll be able to, to hammer that down really tightly. But not, right now, a one cent per one percent is a, is a good estimate. Again, those are not included in, in this draft budget. Um, before we jump over to a capital item, um, that is all I've got for, as far as, um, personnel items in the proposed budget. Did y'all have any questions on any of that before we jump to capital? Okay.
That was laid out very well and I appreciate that.
I do, I do have a question about, um, the laborer, uh, positions. Um, how desperate are we? How, how badly do we need the maintenance, the building maintenance, the landfill? I mean, I know we're strapped at the landfill and some of these are, uh, uh, they, I'm thinking even at the landfill, are we running into overtime or anything because we don't have that position? Or even building maintenance?
So we can have the departments draft a, some, for the next week's, um, meeting and, and give you an idea of, of what. Cause like I said, the, the eighth meeting is just going to be a, a rehashing of what's there. You've still got plenty of time to make any changes. You've still got plenty of time to make any changes between now and the adoption in September. So if y'all, you know, review whatever the departments have as justifications and want to reassess some of these, we've got plenty of time for that, so I'll be sure to get that to you.
And I'd appreciate a copy of the PowerPoint, a printed copy of the PowerPoint. Because it's really helpful to see it like that than really just in the budget.
And I know, I know you'll provide this to us, but knowing once we have the tax rates, what the revenue we would generate on a penny would be.
Sure, yeah, right, right. Yeah, that'll be part of the next one's presentation, but yeah.
But all this, and you, right when you get it, it would be helpful. Just send us an email, we can pick it up in our box.
Sure.
So we have some time.
Well, I can get this to you tomorrow. That one will probably be Monday before we get it finished, because it'll probably be Friday before we finish the calculations. Anything else on salaries before we move ahead? Okay. So I know that we've had some discussions on the city hall roof. Mr. Bartlett has, you know, tried to come to some resolution on different scenarios of what we can do to solve this. One thing that I did want to bring to your attention, and if you'll notice in your draft budget, it's all highlighted in brown, I mean in gray, because I wanted to discuss it a little bit tonight. Our general fund reserves are still healthy, but with the amount of capital, we didn't buy hardly any capital equipment in the general fund last year. And so this year, with the CIP and the capital equipment, if we fund all of these items, including the roof at $900,000, we are estimated to take our general fund reserves down to about 33%, which is four months. Our actual reserve that we require is three months. So where in the past, we've been four and a half to five months of reserves, we're going to, or five and a half to six months of reserves, we're going to be down to four months of reserves if we use a million dollars of our reserves to do the roof. So there's a couple of scenarios, and I know that Mr. Bartlett had sent that, you know, as to do not all of the AC units or whatever. But I want you all to be aware that there is an option to do what we did with the ladder truck. If you'll remember two years ago, when we had the $1.4 million that we needed to buy the new ladder truck, we issued a tax note. Tax notes are very much short-term financing for municipalities. They're easy to do, as far as 30 to 45 days, we can have a tax note issued. There is a term of 13-month minimum and a seven-year maximum. The financial advisors are going to run a actual scenario based on today's interest rates. They're going to give me that tomorrow, and I will email that to you as soon as I get it. But based on what we did with the $1.4 million for the fire truck two years ago, I'm estimating that a million dollars on a seven-year tax note is a little less than a penny on the tax rate. And that's a debt rate, so keep in mind, that's a whole separate than our M&amp;O that is restricted to the 3.5% increase every year. Debt rate is completely separate. The only thing, the only debt we have right now is the fire truck. And so this will give us the ability to fund the full amount without using all of our reserves currently. It's just an option, but if it is something that y'all are interested in, it is something that we have to know before we actually set the tax rate, because that debt rate has to be set with the anticipation that the tax note will be issued within the next fiscal year. So if it's something that y'all are considering, we'll need to know before we actually adopt the tax rate that that's something that we want to do.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay. Stevie, you said something about we could cut that $900,000 in half by doing the roof and doing all the units on the top, right?
Yes, sir, and I think you guys ultimately got an email with that breakdown. Right, about $100,000 is just the rooftop units?
Right.
So that would come off and reduce that 900 down. Yeah, upper fours.
But you already had 200 and something set aside for that, didn't you?
That's correct.
We did.
So really, you're just looking at 200 and something thousand.
If we choose to do that, yes. This was just an option if we're going to do the full replacement now.
And in the same regard, this 900 is 700 of new money, if that makes sense.
And how long will the roof last? I mean, about, I mean, what are we looking at?
25 years. Like, it's a membrane roof, so yeah, something in that regard. And I'm sure we'll have some patch repairs, but generally, yes.
I got plenty of them, I know what to do.
Does that sound correct? Yeah.
That's right.
Just wanted to put it out there, the 400,000, doing the lesser is an option. This is an option if we want to do it all now without using completely using our reserves. Just an option for y'all to consider.
So could, would you refresh my memory? Maybe Mr. Bartlett, who has to, sorry, refresh. So the smaller amount is not doing the air conditioners or?
So it is only doing the air conditioners that sit on the roof that have to be removed anyway with the crane? But it is not doing the rest of the air conditioner, so does that mean you won't be doing the rest of the air conditioners? No, we will be replacing those as we can, as we need to, over time.
We have had a lot of problems with all of that. And you're saying that replacing all of it would correct all those problems?
Sure, we have two of them.
Problem again.
So who's taking notes?
You're being recorded.
We only have two of them that have been recently replaced, so I'll call them pseudo-new. The rest of them are, you know, you saw the ages down to 2010 vintage, so they are at end of life or near end of life. So, yeah, we, there will be budget monies in the future that we don't know when to buy additional air conditioners if we don't.
Okay, all right, if you took that, went the $400,000 away and the 200,000 that you already have, okay? That makes it 200,000, and then do the police roof and the Durst Taylor roof. Would you still have to do a tax note?
No, 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 no. The tax note is truly if we just want to do the full roof. This is an option if we're going to do the whole thing now. It's an easy way to do that without using a million dollars worth of your reserves. If we choose to do the lesser, then yes, that would just come in, we would have that amount out of reserves. It would just save $500,000 worth of reserves. So instead of four months, we probably have four and a half months of reserves, yeah.
And that was my question. We can fund this fully out of reserves if we wanted to.
Yes, and we can do that, it's just it takes our reserves down closer to that breakpoint, so. This was just an option if we didn't want to use it, because here's the thing with reserves. If we have a bad year next year, and let's just say sales tax tanks, we know interest rates are going to start going down at some point next year. If we have a reduction in revenues and we are not able to add to our reserves with the end of next year's budget, at some point, we're not going to have money to fund CIP, our capital equipment in the general fund. And so this was an option just not to use all of our cash in the general fund for the roof and have it. Because a roof lasts more than seven years, we could do this easily. But if we choose to go the smaller route, then yes, of course, we can do it with reserves and still be okay.
Well, when we get that money back from the hospital district, we'll be able to. It'll take a while, but we'll figure it out.
And one more question on the roof, I'm so sorry. The, we do expect, you're saying that the other air conditioners are at the end of their life? So we would poss, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around it. We would possibly have to replace them in the next year or two anyway?
They're on the ground.
I have no doubt that in the next calendar year, we will have some air conditioner replacements or some high-level maintenance replacement work that goes on. And I think that will be the case year after year after year in our future.
And I know we did ask about any electricity savings that we would anticipate if we want. I'm just trying to get the gauge between saving those dollars now and, or just going ahead and biting the bullet and doing that investment. Are we, how much are we saving and how much are we?
And we haven't quantified it other than, they said we're at a much higher SEER rating than a 2010 unit, and there would be notable savings in electricity use. But they haven't, because we don't know for each different unit and type of unit, you know, what that would be. So it was a little hard to calculate your answer, other than they could say that we thought you would see a notable savings. But I don't know what that dollar is. It is not $400,000.
I'm not going to beat this horse to death much longer, but, okay. Now, we were also talking about a big expenditure on our water meters. But we have that money, right?
Yes, that's budgeted.
Okay, so, and it wasn't going to be any more than that?
Well, what we can do is we will do the number of meters for that amount. We won't, it won't be a full system replacement, but we can do what we can do with what we have budgeted.
Is a tax note a certificate of obligation?
It is not. It is a short-term financing. COs are not short-term, this is, it's not a bond. It's just a, it's just a way for municipalities to finance without. Most of it would be done through, with that this amount, would be done through a local bank more than likely.
I just wanted to clarify, yeah.
The roof air conditioner, what percent of the billing does that cover?
Covers my office, and it's really hot up there right now, so I would appreciate an air conditioner. I don't know. So, well, you may know, what the ground AC units that we may have to replace, what would estimate on what one of those might cost? Because I have something else I need to tell them, do you have any idea what those cost?
Well, there's big ones and little ones, so there isn't a number.
Like, would it be 25,000, would it be 40,000? Do you have any of them?
I think easily be between 20 and 50.
Okay, so the reason I ask that is because last year was the first year that council adopted a replacement plan, kind of like our equipment replacement fund for vehicles, and we started it for HVAC. Because we were having so many issues with ACs across the city going out, and it wouldn't be budgeted. And an AC goes out at the police department, it's $15,000, or it goes out here and it's $12,000. And we didn't have that money in the budget. So last year, we took $100,000 out of general fund reserves, and we created a replacement fund just for HVAC units, okay? This year, we're funding, we start, we set it up with 100,000, and then we're going to fund a 50,000 every year going forward for just HVACs, okay? We've used that a couple of times this year, I think we had one at police and one somewhere else. So there is some money, but what I wanted to explain is that we're only putting 50,000 a year, and that might replace one, and then all the other facilities that have AC units are not going to have the money. So even though we have that HVAC equipment replacement, it's not going to fund the needs for the ones on the ground if they all start going out, because they're not, they're not $4,000 and $5,000 units, they're 20, 30, 40,000 unit. So just keep in mind, although we have that, that's really not going to be a solution for the ones here.
And the water meters, that's out of a different fund.
Yeah, that's a utility fund, right, right, right.
So that's a whole different, we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. And that's all I have for tonight. So anything else that y'all want to talk about? If there's anything, as y'all are going through the budget document when you can't sleep this week, if there's anything that you see in there that you have questions about, please feel free to email me. I will reply so that everybody gets the answer. Anything that it concerns you that you see that's in there that you don't want to be in there? We can have those discussions next week, if there's things that are not there that you want to be, vice versa, let me know. We can discuss that, and then, like I said, next week, we'll present what we have. But that gives you a week to actually look and know what you're going to see next week.
So are there any other items here that are additional items that we normally aren't funding? I know there were different requests at different times, but I haven't seen this all in just this the first time.
So related to capital or for what?
To this budget, any other budget items that?
So normally, all your requests are going to be either personnel-related or capital requests-related. All of the departments, their operating budget, we requested that they try to stay within their current amounts. A lot of that, we were not able to do because, you know, the cost of, you know, paper went up, and so their office supplies had to be raised. So the majority of those operational increases, we've gone through with a fine-tooth comb. And the ones that we increased were ones that the contract amounts are increased or the actual supplies have increased. So there's really not a whole lot of new items in this budget, with the exception of the three police officers, the step pay, the sign-on bonuses. Those are the kinds of things that are included that were, you know, something new. Capital is going to be listed, there's going to be for each fund in there. You'll see the general fund capital equipment, the general fund CIP in the very back, you'll see what the CIP looks like. Those are all the requests that were submitted. The departments went through and said, okay, let's take parks for example. Parks submitted 30 capital equipment requests. We can't fund everything. And so we sent it back and said, go through, tear it, and say, this is what has to happen in '23-24. Here's what can wait until next year, and here's what's just a want. And so those things for next year and the wants were taken out. So all you're going to see in here as far as capital equipment, departments that absolutely cannot function without next year. So there's nothing in here that say want, these are all strictly needs as far as from the departments.
One other thing, Pam. Okay, on your budget, so every department, when we end our year, has spent everything in their budget.
No, some, some do. And in the last several years, we have really tightened down those operating budgets. In the past, there was a lot of line items that might be a little, you know, slush fund here. We had $5,000 for office supplies, and they never spent more than 2,500. Well, things got tight a few years ago, and those all were adjusted down. And so most of the department's operating budgets now are pretty close to what they're actually going to spend. And so where in the past, a department may only spend 88 to 92% of their budget, now they're spending 98 and 99% of their budget. Keep in mind, the majority of every department's budget, though, is personnel. So the only way that they're not spending all of that is if they have vacant positions. And then the departments that have vacant positions, their overtime is going to be over because of that, so.
If there is any money left over, it goes back in the general fund.
That's how we build our reserves in the general fund, yes.
I'm done.
So this $1,010,000 is currently in this proposed budget?
It is currently in the budget.
So there would be no additional tax increases based on?
Well, this is capital, so this would be straight out of reserves. Right, so that has no tax implication. This is just use of reserves.
So what we're saying is, we wouldn't reduce the reserves any more than what is in this?
What's currently there, yes. Because that whole 1.1 is in here showing, so you'll see the reserves, assuming we're just going to pay cash for all this, yeah.
You'd rather have it, do it on a tax note.
Here's the issue. The, this, this year, we're, I'm perfectly okay with us having four months' worth of reserves. What is scary to me is that next year, we could literally be back at the 25% and have three months' reserves if revenues go down or if expenditures go up. Now, we've seen our expenses go up, up, up. Hopefully, we've seen the max, and I hope we don't go any further, because none of us are going to be able to pay our bills. But if the expenses go up, then we're not going to be adding to, that's how we add to reserves. If we don't spend all of our budget for each department, that adds to reserves. Any revenues over what we budgeted, that adds to reserves. And so the fear is, is over time, if revenues are shrinking, which everything but sales tax is. We got in our electric franchise yesterday, it posted, and it was down again for the third year. And so our revenues are shrinking with the exception of sales tax. We know that it is inflated because of inflation, and so we know it's going to start coming down at some point. And so we've tried to be, you know, generous with the budget, but still be conservative enough that if it does start going down, that we're not going to be, I don't want to have to come to you and say, we're not going to be able to make payroll. So we were a little bit conservative with that.
The last thing I want, Pam, is you scared.
Yeah, I don't want to be scared, you don't. I don't like to be scared. I don't want to come up here and say we have to let people go home. Never done that, don't want to do that.
So other than the items that are on the proposed bond election, are there any other significant items? I mean, I haven't gone through this, but.
So the CIP, those last three pages, if you want to look at those real quick. So these are your capital improvements by fund, and you'll notice the green column is what's currently budgeted, okay? So those will carry over, if we haven't spent it, they'll carry over. The blue is the new things that we're proposing this year. So like in general fund, $180,000 for the temple splash pad. There, the city hall roof, of course, is down there. So those are the new items in blue. And then the orange are the items that are not going to be in this budget, but they're part of that bond election, because we can't add them to the budget, because we don't know what's going to pass. So once we get past the bond election, then this will become a budget amendment next year, and that will actually roll in. But those green, blue, and so anything in that blue is where I would pay attention to. Those are new projects that we are proposing for this year, so look at the blue.
And if you could, like, give us background, because I know we have spent so much on the splash pad. I'd like to know what we've spent to date on that, or is that a new, that's the same?
That is temple, that's the temple one, you know, we had to, we, did we close it? We've already closed the temple one, that is replacement of the temple splash pad. Yeah.
If you could, any background you can give us on any of the items where we would have cost savings or we have invested a lot, and also even the departmental budgets? If you can say this is what we're spending money on, that we're not adding a new position, but we've added two new trucks or we've added, you know, so I don't know what, I mean, I just.
So no capital will be? So no, no capital will be in the departments, yeah. All, all the capital comes from reserves, so none of the departments are going to have anything. Their, their budget is just going to be their salaries and their supplies. Yeah. And they, and that's on, and that's on page for general fund. That is on page six. That is the, that's the departmental budgets by department for general fund.
Were you all, when you, I know you did a, had a new, a new process where you had interdepartmental discussion. Were you able to find some cost savings or, or were you?
I will, I will be perfectly honest with you. It was a very good process, but what was found was that?
More needs.
Yes, yes. And that was exactly what, that, at the end of the day, we, we came across with very, very few reductions and lots of additions. Yeah. I, I think it was eye-opening for some of the departments to see, how are you doing? How are you operating? You don't even have significant, I mean, you don't have enough to even do this. And so the departments were like, oh, no, you need to add that. I'm like, well, we were talking about subtracting, not adding. So that, there were, but there were some things that were added as a result of those, of those meetings.
It would be helpful to me to know what you all found, you know, just among them. Just even a short discussion of what you saw, you know, like which departments who had no paper.
That, that'll be a little bit more difficult to get, because Keith and I were not involved in those meetings with the departments. We allowed them to, to really have an open discussion without us. And so some of them kept really good notes, and so we'll be able to get that, but.
Necessary, but it sure is helpful to hear, you know, what, you know? Like, if the police department's been functioning with no paper or, you know, we've had to, or whatever. I mean, it's nice to know what, what came out of those.
Anything else?
Did I ask for public comment?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any public comment? Okay. All right, are we through with that one? Okay. All right, we'll go to Adam D. Set public hearing dates for both budget and tax rate.
Speaking.
Pam?
Okay, so as, as mentioned earlier, we are anticipating having the public hearing on the budget on September the fifth. The laws changed a couple of years ago, and so now we have to have a separate, separate special called meeting seven days later. The tax rate and the budget have to be adopted within seven days of each other. Now, they can be adopted on the same day. So if September the fifth, we have the public hearing on the budget, and there are people that come up and bring ideas or something that you want to add or remove from the budget, we still have time. So what we would do, and we did this a couple of years ago, what we would do is just table that adoption of the budget until the twelfth, and then we would come back on the twelfth. And before we do the tax rate, we would adopt the budget. As long as the budget is adopted before the tax rate, we're good. And so this is the schedule. Now, if something happens and we need to push this, we can do September the twelfth and the nineteenth. This is just historically, we've been able to, to finish it by the first and second week of September. If we have additional workshops in August and we want to push this, we can. All, all it will require is I have to have some, some advance notice, because that will change the advertising for the public hearing. It has to be put on our TV station, and it has to be continuous. And so I will, as we get into August, I'll give you some more drop-dead deadlines on that if we want to push it. But for right now, we're, we're proposing that the public hearings be on September fifth and the twelfth.
Okay.
Do you need a motion or anything?
Yes, we'll actually have to set the public hearings, so however, yeah.
I move that we set the public hearing dates for both the budget and for the budget for September fifth and for the tax rate for the fifth, if possible, and the twelfth, if necessary.
The tax rate can't be on the fifth. The tax rate has to be the twelfth, yeah.
And the twelfth.
Right.
So there you go.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? And, and let me tell you, that's going to put us about a meeting a week. And then when I call some special ones, there's going to be more than that. So get ready to go to work, people.
All in favor?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All.
All oppose, same sign. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 and pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. We will adjourn to executive session at six-twenty-five. Thank y'all very much. We'll be out shortly. Open session, and the time is eight-fourteen. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 and Texas Government Code Section 551.074. No action taken. This meeting is hereby adjourned. God bless this great city.